Thank you, everyone, for attending today. This is our August 11th, 2020, public hearing, public meeting. And this is our afternoon session. We will be resuming our public hearing agenda this afternoon. And I will turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation, to read the first hearing item into the record.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. We're going to start with public hearing item number one. This is LPC 20-08660, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 516, Lot 7, 468 West Broadway, AKA 136 to 144 Thompson Street and 46 to 472 West Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. A Romanesque Revival-style store and loft building designed by Oscar S. Teal and built in 1885 to 86. And the application is to modify a rooftop addition.
And the applicant has joined the hearing, and you now have control of the presentation.
Great, so can I go ahead?
Yes. Yeah, please, go ahead.
My name is Armal Legatir. I'm an architect. This is regarding 468 West Broadway. It's a building that spans on the west side of West Broadway to Thompson Street. You just got a history of what the building is. It's a Romanesque Revival building built in 1886. Our project involves the sixth floor and the roof along the West Broadway facade. Our clients own the two structures. There is currently on the building, this is the facade of the building. It's quite a beautiful brick building. On the roof of the building right now, there is an existing penthouse. It's the structure shown here in the kind of center on the bottom and in the center on the top. Our proposal is to renovate the existing penthouse structure and to add a new roof deck, which would extend from the penthouse to the West Broadway facade. As this shows, there are additional existing structures already on the roof, several skylights that serve the, you know, the existing sixth-floor loft. On the top left is the staircase that goes up to the roof from the West Broadway facade and the elevator overrun. If you look carefully in here, you'll see there are many other rooftop structures as well on the building. The, let me just see if I can get this to go down one. Nope, I might not be able to. There we go. Here are just some more shots of the existing. Oh, I'm so sorry. Problem with Zoom. Sorry. That's, let's go back a little bit. It seemed to have jumped way ahead. So the next shot, which should be one down, is just other shots of the existing penthouse and the facade. I mean, and the roof, just for context. The, I'm sorry, the zoom controls seem to be a little bit lacking. Let's see if I can do this. Having trouble advancing. Jumping all over.
So you can, you.
I'm really sorry.
It's okay. You just mouse on top of the slide, and you can also use.
I was, and it wasn't advancing. You know, I'm in a remote location, so it's a little problematic. I think my connection's probably dead. I apologize. The existing penthouse sits approximately 34 feet back from the West Broadway facade. It's centered north-south in the roof. It's a structure that is 13 feet. I'm averaging the dimensions just for simplicity. It's 13 feet by 20, so we're talking about a 260-square-foot structure. This is as it currently exists. Because it's existing, we cannot enlarge the footprint of it. The, let's just see if this will enable me to do this. There we go. That is a shot of what the structure looks like right now. It's quite low. The actual floor of the penthouse is below the roof level. The structure pops up through the roof, but in order to get to the roof, you have to climb up through this little scuttle door that's here in the lower left. The, this is just showing the facade of the other structures nearby. Our proposal is to, as I said, keep the footprint of the penthouse identical, its location, its size. We would be renovating it and adding a new elevated roof deck in the roof area that our clients own adjacent to it. The roof deck would be an area that has wood decking, artificial lawn. We have to do that because of weight considerations, new skylights, and then a pergola, a wooden pergola. The new structure would look like this. The penthouse would be a stucco exterior wall structure with a stone cap, a wooden pergola, a wooden deck, new metal industrial sash-style doors. Because the building, the original building, is a timber-framed structure, there can be no surcharge on the existing roof. Therefore, everything that we're doing for the roof deck is elevated on donage. The new deck level would be at the face of the penthouse, two foot four inches above the roof. All the drainage and everything for the roof would remain intact. Because the deck is elevated, we would be putting a new frameless glass parapet beside the, you know, directly inboard of the existing masonry parapet along the West Broadway facade. The pergola, which is probably the largest part of our proposal, is a timber-framed structure that is just a framework. The posts for it actually align with the posts in the building below to hold it up, which is part of its rationale. And it's all natural wood. The, the structure would look like this, sitting on top of the existing building. The profile of the existing roof, I mean, existing penthouse is down below it. This is basically what it would look like. It's centered on the facade because that's where the structure is on the building that's holding it up. It is set back to the face of the penthouse, 34 foot six inches from the facade. So from no point on West Broadway is this visible at all. So this just gives you context for it. So these are the materials that we're proposing. It's limestone cap, a, you know, an off-white stucco walls, all-natural wood for any of the decking and for the pergola. The new doors and windows would be out of blackened stainless steel. I mentioned that the lawn has to be a synthetic lawn because of the weight considerations for it. And this is just showing context. From standing on top of our roof, you can see there are lots of rooftop structures nearby. It's kind of the condition of the neighborhood. So looking northwest is the one on the top left. The top right is looking northeast. The lower left is another rooftop structure on this particular building. It's along the Thompson Street facade. And then the lower right is facing southeast. Now, the, let me just see if I can get to the next slide. In June, we did a mock-up of the, you know, to see what the massing would be like. The penthouse itself is this lower structure inside of here. It just matches the footprint of the existing penthouse structure. The pergola is this framework outside of it. And as I think I mentioned, the posts for the pergola actually rest on the structural posts within the building, which is how it gets held up. The pergola runs just right above the roof of the penthouse so that it doesn't impede it. It just, because we're resting on the post for it below, it needs to float above it. The, this is a view from the, from the southeast looking northwest. And this is from the northeast looking southwest, just to show what it looks like. Let's just go to the next one. Will it flip for me, please? Let's try it again. There we go. Okay, so in terms of visibility, there is, I'm sorry. It's really frustrating the way this keeps jumping. I apologize. I just wanted to go back to the roof. I'm so sorry. See if we'll do one more. Um, thank you. Maybe it'll stay here. In terms of visibility, there's no place along, damn it. There's no place along West Broadway that it's visible. Could one of the staff perhaps help just to get it to the next slide? I can't seem to control it.
Sure, there is, there can be quite a bit of delay. So if you click once, it's best to pause and then let it catch up. But I can certainly go through the slides on your behalf.
Well, I just need to go to the, I believe it's the one after this that showed, I'm sorry, it's, I'm just trying to get to the site plan that shows the, two more. Yeah, I'm at a, on an island in Maine, and so our internet connection is very poor. Thank you. That's where I'd like to stay. Thank you. The, in terms of visibility, there is no place along West Broadway where this can be seen. It can actually be seen very briefly for about 100 feet along the north side of Houston Street. We've shown it in the diagram here labeled between points A and points B. There is an entrance to an underground parking garage at the NYU site directly across the street there, where you can actually see it. The view is actually defined by here. Whoops, I'm sorry. This, on this building immediately north of 468 West Broadway, there is a fairly tall rooftop structure that defines the western limit of where you can see it. And on the, on the, to the east, there's the building at the corner of, you know, the south, I'm sorry, the east side of West Broadway in Houston. And so this is about 100-foot range where it shows, the next slides will be showing from point A to point B what the mock-up looks like, and then a photo montage and then a rendering of it. So if I can go to the next slide, let's see if it'll let me do that. Thanks. Okay, this is actually the mock-up photographs on the same day that we did the other mock-up. The one on the left, and these are the two structures that I was referring to. This is the building on the, on the east side of West Broadway that cuts it off on one side. This is the tall structure on the adjoining building on the west that cuts it off. This is actually the mock-up, where you can see the posts and the beam for the pergola. Moving further to the west, this is where, if we go any further west, this actually disappears below the cornice. So this is showing the mock-up itself. This next shot will show the mock-up with simply orange on it to make it highly visible, so you can see it there. And then the next shot actually shows a rendering of this, which actually, let's see if it will go. Thank you. The rendering of the pergola, which is natural wood, it would be essentially the same color as the water tank next to it. In terms of what the actual structure looks like, the next shot shows a rendering of the roof deck taken from the same point of view as the mock-up. So this is what you would be looking at. The area in question that shows from across Houston Street is simply the beam and the posts here. None of the rest of it is visible. And so this is the one taken from the, the north, sorry, from the southeast corner facing northwest. And the last shot here is the companion from the original mock-up. So this is actually the part that shows from Houston Street. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, not seeing any questions at this time. Let's see if we have anyone who'd like to speak on this item. And if you are in the meeting and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signed in in advance. Anthony, can you take us through the testimony?
Sorry about that. So for this item, we just have that CB2 recommended approval.
Okay, and doesn't appear that there are any other members of the public who wish to speak. Okay, any final questions, commissioners, before we move to close the hearing? All right, I am starting to unmute you all. And for some of you, you'll have to accept that, so look for that. And Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
I'd second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start this discussion?
Nicely done. I think it's eminently approvable.
Great. Commissioner Chen?
I have no problem with it.
Commissioner Bland?
Likewise, I think it's approvable.
Commissioner Luffey?
I agree, good work.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate, approvable.
Commissioner Gustafson?
It's barely visible. It's modest. And I thank the applicant for very clear presentation materials. It is approvable.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I approve.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree, approvable, it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, it's a nice project. I can approve it as presented.
And Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree.
Hey, we have a consensus to approve here. Commissioner Devonshire, would you read that motion?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
In the matter of LPC 20-08660 468 West Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension, occasion to modify a rooftop addition, I recommend approval. I know that the work will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features. Be visible from any public thoroughfare with the exception of a small portion of the pergola, which will be visible from oblique angles on West Houston Street. That the proposed rooftop addition will be set back from the facades, thereby helping to maintain a sense of the building's original massing. But the design materiality of the rooftop addition featuring beige stucco and limestone, black finish metal window and door assemblies will be in keeping with the treatment of rooftop additions and other rooftop accretions found throughout the historic district. But the proposed wood material, the pergola, will be in keeping with other materials found on rooftop accretions at surrounding buildings, helping it to maintain a discreet presence at the roof. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building for the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Okay, and Anthony, will you call our vote?
Yes. Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Goldblum? I think he's muted.
He's muted.
Let me try and unmute him.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luffey?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, and with all in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. That's approved, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you. And the next item is number two. This is LPC 20-06856, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 97, Lot 9, 107 South Street in the South Street Seaport Historic District. A building built circa 1818 to 19 and altered in 1855. The application is to construct a rooftop addition, alter the front and rear facades, and replace the storefront.
And Commissioners, the applicant has joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Just stating in for the record, you may begin.
Okay, and before the applicant starts, I'd like to just note for the record that Commissioner Bland is recused from this item and will not be attending this meeting, this discussion.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, everyone.
Okay, please state your name, and you may begin.
Sorry. My name is Thomas Barry from Opera Studio Architecture. And I understand, I'm sorry, I understand that I'm controlling the presentation but not sharing my screen. I.
That's correct.
Sorry, should I be seeing the presentation? There we go. And I'm able to move through it. Okay, great, thank you. Okay. So, okay, so once again, my name is Thomas Barry from Opera Studio Architecture. Tribeca Pediatrics has purchased the building at 107 South Street in the South Street Historic District. The building was a five-story fish warehouse and wholesaler. Tribeca Pediatrics has 30 pediatric offices in New York and around the country. And the proposed conversion will be used for use as their headquarters for management of the practice and for their call center. They've been part of the lower Manhattan community since opening their first office in 1996, and they're really invested in keeping their operations. The conversion will bring full-time workers to the South Street District on a regular daily basis, increasing street life and activity. The existing building is 8,300 square feet, and we're adding approximately 2,300 gross square feet of floor area in a one-and-a-half-story addition, including the bulkhead. We are proposing to utilize 10,400 square feet of the allowable 11,900 zoning square feet for the site, about 1,500 square feet below the maximum buildable for the site. The, sorry. The context is, the site is in the South Street Seaport Historic District on South Street along the FDR Drive between Beekman and Pec Slip. The building was built in 1818 of brick construction and served as a fish warehouse for much of its history. The block is fronted by similar-sized warehouse buildings with characteristic brick fronts, dormers, steeply-sloped roofs, and continuous storefronts at the ground level. In its current state, the building has been boarded up, and the top brick courses and cornice have been given a stucco treatment. The ground floor is basically open with a roll-up gate and access door. The block is composed of similar buildings at similar heights and scales from, between the one-story and seven-story plus bulkhead range. So here we are. There's some buildings in the six- and seven-story range surrounding us with setbacks. This is a more recent photo from 1975 showing our building here, some of the adjacent buildings with their steeply-sloped roofs and typical warehouse-type buildings. The site behind us has since been developed with a new six-story-plus building here. Basically, these sites blocking visibility of the rear from adjacent street. The proposed expansion keeps the footprint of the existing building and the existing 13-foot rear yard, and will add one story plus a mezzanine on top. The approach is to maintain the existing cornice line at the front slope with a steep slope matching the adjacent buildings to the north. You'll see that in perspective a bit later. And then we continue with a bulkhead here for a small portion of it. In order to get usable floor height on the new sixth floor, where five stories existing, we're adding six plus a mezzanine, we're proposing a dormer, which would be set back from the cornice line, five feet six inches, and a foot and a half offset on either side, left and right. This is the existing building. From the rear of the site, the existing roof is sloping slightly towards the front, leaving us with barely usable six-foot headroom at the front of the building. So with our proposal, in section, we're starting the slope from the existing cornice, getting back some additional usable space at the front of the existing fifth floor continuing up. And with the sixth floor that we're adding, getting a dormer to increase the usable floor area there and installing a mezzanine under the main slope after it flattens out with a small stair bulkhead coming up. And actually, an elevator, the elevator stops at the sixth floor, so the overhead and bulkhead is tucked under the roof profile. Here in elevation, you can see those components. The new dormer set back, the bulkhead rising. We're also proposing a new storefront, restoring the windows to the front facade with new wood windows in a two-over-two subdivision. The bulkhead was similar, or the new dormer was similarly scaled, proportioned two-over-two windows, and replacing the smaller windows at the top floor while restoring the brick and the cornice and removing the stucco facing. At the rear facade, basically, you'll see the new floor, the sixth-floor addition, and the mezzanine, and then the bulkhead. We're proposing to open up that wall a bit from the existing openings to get more light into the open office space. Basically, all the floors are primarily open office space with the exception of some common space in the ground floor. The brick is existing on the rear facade. You can see in this photo some of the stucco paraging is peeling away, revealing it appears to be in good shape. We'll point and clean that. And for the addition for the front and the sides, we're proposing a dark gray stucco finish. This side elevation also shows the relationship of the existing building to the rear, six stories relative to our addition. The other elevation, the north elevation, our neighbor with its sloped roof. We have our existing brick sidewall. And the addition, I'll talk about the materiality of that a little bit in the renderings. So the top view of the proposal, looking from the southeast. So the material for the roof and the dormer surround will be standing seam zinc with wood windows and piers and panels, infilling that opening with, again, wood windows painted two-over-two. A new skylight, and then the continuation of the stair for roof access here for the bulkhead. To start with the existing view compared to the rendering, the existing building that we saw earlier with the proposal, with the new storefront, two-over-two windows, brick restored at the top, cornice revealed and painted. And the zinc roof material will trim out the wall at the top and continue to the bulkhead. So characteristic steep slope, carrying the rhythm of the adjacent buildings, and our new dormer addition set back against six feet. We did a pole test last week with 12-foot poles at the point setback distance to verify the visibility of the frontage of that. Hold on, I've got a little lag. Oops. Just wanted to flip back and forth. So it appears to be, the rendering appears to be accurate for the amount of visibility based on what we're seeing on site with the poles. And there we go. The view from the southeast. The view from very close to the building. No visibility here from this perspective. From this perspective, on the sidewalk, and then on, from the south view. From the north, fairly close to the building, you can start to see the dormer portion hook up. This was what the, what the pole study has, has shown us as well. These renderings illustrate, uh, views from the FDR and from the next one from the Brooklyn Bridge. So just kind of flipping back and forth, you can see, uh, the mass here. The roof line following these roof lines, um, not interrupting, um, any, any existing sky, uh, skylines in that, uh, larger downtown buildings are, are backdrop on this from, uh, from these perspectives. This is the view from the Brooklyn Bridge. That's us right there. You can also see the large extension to the neighbor to our south. And our, um, profile of the new roof with the dormer. Some more of the sightlines for the mockup fairly close to the, on the sidewalk. A few, a few doors north, you can start to see the, the dormer portion further north. You can see it largely as a side elevation similar to the building behind us. A lot of that will, will be visible. And then the storefront, um, which, uh, it will be steel and glass, basically. We're maintaining an existing cast iron column and doing a, a common entry. It'll be built up of steel plates and tubes. I have details of that to follow. And then, uh, an exit door from a, from a scissors stair exit here at this point on the sidewalk. So basically, maintaining the existing openings, there's currently a door and then a large roll-up gate here. Key plan for the massing, and we'll get into. So as I said, the, 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 the side and rear walls for the addition, which would be stud, cold form construction, we're proposing a stucco finish in the dark gray. The front wall, uh, of the dormer, the slope, um, would be of standing seams zinc. Concealed gutter detail ahead of the existing cornice. Replacing wood windows, um, and storefront detailing, which would basically be a series of tubes and plates, narrow sightlines, painted steel. The vertical posts being composite, uh, tube and plate construction with fixed blazing between, uh, a steel tube entry door recessed and horizontal section through that. With the idea that the, um, that the, uh, the vertical members will have some shadow lines created by the composite structure of the, the tube and plate posts. Go to, uh, so, stucco finish. Standing seam, uh, with the primary, uh, material palette for the addition. Interesting. Seems to be the end of the slides. Oh, wait. That's okay, there was one more. But, um, I think that would conclude the presentation. I have, uh, additional supporting information if, if needed, if any questions come up. I think I'll leave it here.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, and I think we will have some questions, and then we'll take some public testimony. Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
If you go, if you go ahead, if you show me your roof plan for a second.
Would you like, uh, I can show you the actual, uh?
Well, the, the, the.
Plan of the overhead view. Um, this is okay.
You have the bulkhead, you have the skylight, and then you have the, uh, what I, what's sticking out?
The dormer.
So I was wondering, why, why would the skylight shifted not aligned with the dormer? So you have a cleaner composition because you have such, you have so many elements there that the zigzag seems to take away from some kind of, uh, cohesiveness. So why not, why, why the skylight where it is and not shift it over to a lot warmer? Any reason for that?
I have a, I have a pragmatic answer. It's not such a compositional answer, and it's that this portion of the plan is where the elevator is and the core of the building. Um, and I can show you that in, um, the plan. But, um, that, that was, that was the, that's why this landed here, and we, we aligned it with, uh, one edge of the dormer.
Other question, the guardrail, it's extensive, why is it so much on the, on the bulkhead side? Why isn't it just smaller?
I'm sorry.
The guardrail, the handrail.
Here. Well, uh, it's, uh, the minimum-sized guardrail, uh, for, um, an accessible roof. Forty-two inches. We set it back a little bit from the, um, from the edge. It's not right at the edge.
Thank you.
We set back a couple of feet to kind of reduce it a little. We need something there, we would need something there.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I just had one question. How tall is that dormer in comparison to the dormers on the adjacent building? And did you, could you, or did you consider doing sort of two more traditional dormers versus the shed dormer?
Um, sure. Uh, let me answer the second part first, maybe with the, the sixth-floor plan. Since that is really what drove that aspect. Since I'm on the plans, um, I'm sorry. So the skylight is above this area to, to answer the, um, previous question. And then, and then the core sort of occupies this zone, the elevator overhead there. But, um, on the sixth floor, we did, uh, sorry, the lag. So this is kind of, this is basically how the dormer, uh, will shape up on the sixth floor. So, um, we would be effectively subdividing that space into two smaller usable spaces. And we, we, we wanted to get as, as much out of the usable floor space of the plan without, um, you know, compromising, um, the, the, the building exterior aesthetic. And the height is similar to that. Our actual dormer is about, sorry. I know it's not fun watching the slides run by like this, but.
It's okay.
Section. Sorry. So we're at, um, it's ten, it's, it's effectively ten feet in height.
Okay.
And that's to below point of it, that's this wall.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, um, from a code point of view, if this had a traditionally pitched roof, gable, in other words, would you need the bulkhead?
If we pitched the roof back at a twenty percent slope, no, no, I don't believe so.
Nice, second question.
You'd keep going too, and that probably wouldn't be amenable.
No pointy. So, did you ever consider, um, just raising the top floor to match the neighbor?
Um, this, this, this would be the existing top floor.
Top floor. If I'm not mistaken, it's, it, it, it was clearly raised from when building was originally built. And, and it looks like the neighbor who probably started in the same place as you did had a different solution, right? They have a full, uh, floor there. Ever consider that?
Yeah, uh, well, I mean, I think what you're saying would imply that, um, we would be extending the wall, the front wall. We had a, we had a version of that, um, which would have made taller windows here at the front, um, which, um, some of the staff, and I, I don't know if this made it to the commissioners as a, as a sketch or as a proposal, um, sorry. Was, the, the issue there was that it, it would, it would basically be, um, I know the neighbor to the left had a fire, and there's, there's some significant damage, which I think made the commission more amenable to, to increasing the height of that front wall. In our case, it's all intact, and we, we didn't really want to change the existing elements of.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right, so I'm not seeing any questions right now. So we'll move to public testimony, and we may have more questions afterwards. So if you're here and would like to speak, um, raise your hand using the button at the bottom of the screen, of your screen. And, um, we'll turn it over to Anthony, our Director of Intergoverned Community Affairs, to manage the testimony. Anthony?
Okay, so we do have Simeon Bankoff here, so I will let Simeon. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Simeon Bankoff is Historic District's Council. The South Street Seaport is arguably the oldest area of Manhattan that possesses the greatest amount of architectural integrity due in no small part to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's oversight. This particular building is especially evocative of the area's long-lived-in history. Its middle floors are basically untouched, and it appears to be a deeply unreconstructed fish market building, which is a good thing. HCC finds the proposed rooftop addition to be awfully bulky and not especially sensitive to this historic structure. It appears to be an ungainly mansard-esque with enormous dormers and reads as a very visible massive doorstop plopped atop this modest building. It's unapologetic, unapologetically huge and metal and just too big. The proposed storefront seems overly modern and glassy and seems more in character with some of the lesser modern examples additions in the seaport than with the Historic District's actual context. For example, granite piers are typical for this area. The treatment on these piers seems to be a bland stucco. Overall, the proposed storefront lacks character and visual interest. This building, which possesses distinctive honesty in its historic patina, deserves better treatment than this. This building is not very precious now, an increasingly rare thing in our historic city, and it'd be sad to see it gussied up with a hurried-up storefront design and HVTV treatment. Finally, with regard to the rear facade treatment, it'd be strongly preferable to keep the original punched, oh, punched openings and penetration intact to better preserve the legibility of this pre-civil war building. I will add that it is nice, uh, to see that the, um, the elevator bulkhead was incorporated within the interior program. We do admire that, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else who's trying to testify.
Okay, great, and did we receive any written testimony and a, or a resolution from the community board?
Yes, we did, um, so Manhattan CV one, a recommended approval.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I'd like to turn back to the applicant, Mr. Berry. Would you like to respond to any of the comments in the testimony? Mr. Berry?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, um, well, that was, that was a lot. And, um, I think that, uh, starting from the storefront, um, we do have, uh, we, I mean, we were proposing, um, a, a good amount of, of detailing with the steelwork, um, layered elements, built-up elements, and, uh, creating shadow lines and, and depth that I think shows up possibly more in the details and in the renderings. But, um, as opposed to, uh, what would maybe be considered the default off-the-shelf aluminum tube structure, uh, and, um, we put a lot of thought into that. I, you know, I think that the other, uh, comments regarding the bulk are more subjective. And, um, you know, I, I believe that the, the way that we've treated it, the addition particularly the dormer front and other elements is to use natural materials and to, um, to scale it down appropriately with elements such as, um, the appropriately sized scaled windows, the, 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 the piers, uh, the, the wood, the wood paneling, the piers between the windows, to, uh, balance out, uh, the, the proposed bulk. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any other questions, any final questions before we move to our discussion? All right, so I'm not seeing any hands raised. I'm going to move us to our discussion phase. And Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh. Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we will, um, begin our discussion now. And I, you know, I think Commissioners, the, the big move here is really the change to the roof line and the addition. But just in your discussion, remember to also comment on, if you have any comments on the storefront and the signage on the facade. Okay, and, uh, Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start the discussion?
Yes, um, I, I vote here that the, um, the dormer is too big, it's out of scale, and it should be pushed back. I mean, the whole, the whole structure, the whole addition seems so heavy to me, and I couldn't figure out what, how to make it better, so, um, I think the, the dormer is, is too big. I thought the, um, the angle was so in, and the handrail, I thought the handrail could be pushed back or scaled out. And the storefront, it, the window, the, the, the scale of the storefront windows, the scale should be smaller scale, more appropriate to, to the neighbors, you know, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, um, right, Gustafson or to?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped him, excuse me, Commissioner Gustafson, I'm sorry.
I thought maybe it was.
You're, you're, you're forgiven. Yeah, um, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Jefferson. I think the, uh, while a, uh, an addition with that particular style of rooftop slope is, is fine with me. Um, I think the dormers are too large, out of scale, uh, too visible. And the, uh, the bulkhead and the, um, and the rail, I mean, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that those simply couldn't be removed in their entirety. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, I, I, I'm not sure I understand the use of the space, but, um, uh, but I think those, those could be removed entirely. And, uh, but the, the rear facade, I think, is fine. And, uh, I was, I agree with Commissioner Jefferson on the storefronts.
Right, okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I'm in agreement with those comments and with, uh, the position that Historic District's Council took. I, I think that this is, there's something sort of insensitive. I'm not sure if it's the size or if it's the style of the dormer. insensitive. I'm not sure if it's the size or if it's the style of the dormer in addition to the sloped roof. Um, I think it has to be revisited and studied again.
Paul Fred Smith?
Yes, I agree with most of the comments that have already been made. Um, I'd like to also add that I find the combination of the standing seam on top of the brick for the sidewall to be very strapping. Uh, and I think that that would be more appropriate to be a stucco, uh, secondary material to make that, that sidewall recede. Um, but I think the dormer is much too large and I, if they could eliminate the stair bulkhead entirely, that would be a big improvement. Um, I think the signage on the front is great to bring back the original, um, sort of signage typology from this district. Um, the storefront itself, I think the details are quite nice, but I think there's just, it's just too much glass for this building, so I'm not sure how they, um, how they respond to that, but I, I feel I need to revisit the storefront as well.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I agree with the, uh, comments of the other Commissioners. Um, I was actually sort of intrigued by Commissioner Goldblum's suggestion that maybe the building, an approach would be to just actually raise the building a bit and eliminate some of the, uh, you know, instead of having this huge dormer and so forth, but in, in any event, I agree with the, as the thing that's being presented to us, the dormer is too large. Uh, the, um, building, uh, the addition at the back, uh, is, is very disruptive. Uh, and that there should be some modification of the storefronts. I also think, um, I was just wondering about the signage, if the numbers are usually as big as the identification of the, of what's in the building. The staff, I mean, could advise on that, but I think that having the, uh, having it on the building is, uh, reflective of the, um, uh, history of the seaport, and so I'm okay with that, so. Basically, I agree with the comments of other Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm in general agreement. I, I think that, um, uh, one of the problems is that the silhouette of this, uh, large addition is so prominent, so visible from not only street but also the highway. Uh, I think that if they're gonna do a, a, a sloping roof addition, um, it should, should be a true gable. Echoes the other buildings in the district. Now, a few years ago, we approved a similar one down the block, uh, for BKESK where, where they did a rooftop addition with a very strikingly, you know, sharp gable. Uh, and putting in the gable would eliminate the, uh, the need for the rooftop bulkhead, the need for the railings altogether. Um, so I think it would involve their losing the double height, the double height kind fact in their top, in their top floor, but it would, uh, it would give them pretty much the same amount of space they have now without, um, without the very unusual and atypical profile that this, that this presents. I, I think Anne's absolutely right. I agree with her in terms of the the edging kind of coping detail with the standing seam coming down the side. It's very unusual and, um, it calls a lot of attention to itself. I think they should go for a much more traditional edging, similar to the building, two doors to the north. Um, I think that the dormers can, should definitely be cut down. You don't need nine-foot clear ceilings inside of a dormer. Um, uh, I think that, uh, you know, looking to the building, looking to the other buildings in the district for how to do a dormer is a much better way to go than, than, uh, than this one, which just doesn't feel, um, at home here. And in terms of the storefront, I agree with Anne. I think there's, I think that the details are not bad, but I think that in, at a distance, it will look very generic, uh, where you can't, you know, if you, if you're back far enough, you can't really see the details. It will look very uh, heavy. Uh, and I think that, um, they could look at doing a bulkhead or adding some other, um, opaque material that would, um, bring it more into harmony with other storefronts in the district.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the fellow Commissioners' comment. I think the dormer is out of scale. Um, it bothers me a lot with the silhouette, uh, is heavy-handed. Um, Commissioner Goldblum's suggestion together, and suggestions are excellent, if you can bring down it as a gable. Uh, and, uh, I, I think, uh, Adi is right, it, it requires re-study.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Letty?
Um, I'm also in agreement with, uh, my fellow Commissioners. The dormer's too bulky, the slope is too big. It's kind of messy up there. There's too much going on. The bulkhead could go away. Um, I think, you know, there were some things to recommend this project. First of all, to bringing a, a, you know, a building that, you know, really hasn't been in use back to use. The work on the facade, um, overall is very nice and the lettering on it is, um, reminiscent of what we saw in the Walker Evans photo from the nine, from nineteen twenty. Um, I like the windows in the front. I do agree about the, you know, the ground floor retail, not really having enough heft to it on the back. I would prefer punched windows, but I could accept what they have if, uh, you know, o- other Commissioners agree, uh, that, that it's okay, but, um, it's too bad. We, we didn't go, he didn't, they didn't go with that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, and thank you all for your comments. So I think where we are is that this, um, the idea of reusing this building and giving it new life is a, a good goal, and I think that conceptually, there are a lot of great, uh, things about this project that will get us there, but we still have a lot of concerns about the silhouette overall, sort of massing and, and of the roof line and the size of the dormer. Um, and I think also there's desire to see the bulkhead and railing be restudied. Um, and I think that the storefront could use some refinement as well. So we'll take no action today and we'll ask the applicants to work with the staff to address all of the comments that you've made and we'll have them come back when they're ready. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll, uh, move to the last item of the day. This is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty dash one, 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 six, nine. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block two ten, lot fourteen, thirty-eight Hick Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Framehouse altered in the mid-nineteenth century with an added fourth story and Italianate features. The application is to alter the facade, replace windows, excavate and construct a rear yard addition.
And I just also want to note that Michael Devonshire has left the meeting for the day.
Um, and Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing and now have control of the application and state your name for the record immediately.
I beg your pardon, I didn't have my video or microphone on. Uh, thank you very much, Corey, for the introduction and, uh, good afternoon to the Commissioners and good afternoon to the Chair, Sarah Carroll. Thank you. Um, my name's John Hathaway and I represent the owners of thirty-eight Hick Street in their application to renovate and extend their house. Uh, given this house and its neighbor number forty are the two oldest surviving houses in Brooklyn Heights. My clients and I have taken great pride and caution in designing this alteration. We propose and request approval to remove the rear one-story section of the house, which has been modified a number of times from its original configuration, and replace it with a two-story extension and one-story porch that conform to the original positions, uh, their original positions relative to the south lot line. We propose facade alterations to the street elevation. We propose new window door openings at the fourth floor rear facade and installation of the exhaust vent. Uh, we pro- propose a new brick cladding at the first floor south over a one-inch continuous rigid insulation, uh, to replace the cement paring over the stone base and to extend the ground area, uh, ground level and areaway to accommodate a new side entry. House was built as a three-story gabled wood frame structure. The roof was raised and the attic converted to an additional floor in the eighteen seventies after the construction of the building to the north. The yellow shading indicates, uh, uh, how the building was built out. Um, was at this time that the original federal-style detailing of the front facade was replaced by an Italianate design. The rear one-story portion of the house, the orange shaded portion, was originally set back from the plane of the four-story, four-story house. As shown on the historical maps from eighteen fifty-five and eighteen eighty-eight down at the lower right-hand, uh, corner. The eighteen eighty-eight sandbar map shows its current neighbor to the north while the eighteen fifty-five map shows another wood frame building that was replaced. Both maps show that there was a side porch at this rear portion. The house experienced some uneven settlement early in its life due to a lack of a low-grade foundation. Um, as the, uh, these exterior photos show, the street facade is tilted back so that the, uh, that is four inches out of plum at the top floor. Uh, interior probes have revealed the original roof framing at the north and south walls. We also found original wide clavbered siding at the north wall that is now concealed by thirty-six Hick Street. Historic photos show the condition of the facade in nineteen forty and, uh, an even more deteriorated condition in the early nineteen sixties. Uh, the nineteen sixty photo, which is of high definition, clearly shows the ghost of the original roof line, the original clavers, uh, from eighteen ten, uh, but add, uh, clavers that were added when the fourth floor was built out. Our proposal is to replicate this clavered in size and pattern. The clavered at the front facade, um, uh, will be a northeastern pine or spruce in thickness to match the original siding. The side and rear elevations will be clad with artisan lap siding by James Hardy with a field painted finish. Please note that this change to wood clavered at the front of the side is a recent change, uh, that we made in consultation with the Brooklyn Heights Association and is not reflected on the presentation drawings. Um, I also note that the first floor entry door has a simple flattened frame um, adjacent to the storefront, uh, which survived until the nineteen sixties. We propose to restore this entry door configuration. Thirty-eight, thirty-eight Hick Street, the screen building, um, excuse me, beg your pardon, thirty-eight, this is our building. Thirty-eight X is probably similar to the federal-style building number forty, the screen building. Um, uh, the side porch of number forty at the side yard provides a hint of what probably existed at thirty-eight, our building. The alleyway between the two houses gives access to a, uh, brick house that is on a landlocked lot known as forty Hick Street Rear. The current paring at the first floor of thirty-eight is seen at this alley and we intend to install, as I mentioned before, uh, brick veneer over a layer of continuous insulation here. Uh, with the facade, uh, of the upper floor is built out by two inches, uh, rigid insulation. There is not enough space to install full bricks. Uh, as you will see, the proposed windows at the first floor will be brought out to the, uh, facade plane to match, uh, those of the upper floor windows. The areaway adjacent to this do and the existing retaining wall, um, that area is to be excavated to increase its length by nine feet toward the rear. Um, that gets us that, uh, secondary entrance door that I was talking about previously. Further views of this alley space from above, uh, and the neighboring porch are shown on this slide. Uh, views from the roof of the one-story portion of our house, looking into the yards, as shown on this page, there is no intact donut or central green space. Uh, and the block was shaved off by the construction of the BQE. Uh, a series of, uh, new stepped-back row houses conform to the truncated side of the block. Uh, the next slide goes, shows rear yard conditions. The rear yard at the, I mean, she, the rear facade at the, uh, third and fourth floor was modified, uh, to install a door to a roof terrace when the roof was raised and leveled, maybe in the nineteen fifties. Um, the proposed extension will align with the rear of the adjacent house to the, brick house to the north. Uh, interior photos of the one-story portion show modern framing at the south wall. That's the side that it butts at, uh, common alleyway. Um, and two-by-three studs with four sides finished, demonstrating that it was widened in the mid-twentieth century. Photos of, uh, these neighboring wood frame buildings, um, relate to window enframents. Uh, number forty-eight Hicks, this corner building, uh, was recently restored in the top, in the Italianate style and it's, uh, two-over-two window configuration and the crown at the window heads are the basis for our proposed window and trim. Number twenty-seven Mida, um, uh, the upper right corner, um, is shown um, uh, to contrast an original Italianate window enframent to that which is installed at thirty-eight Hick Street in the late nineteenth century. While the crown at the window head of thirty-eight is very similar to the height and projection of, uh, twenty-seven Mida, its windows are substantially shorter and a bit narrower resulting in what I consider a heavy, poorly proportioned lintel. Um, we feel that the trim used at forty-eight Hicks, without any brackets and with less of a projection, is more appropriate to the scale of the facade thirty-eight Hicks. Location of the property is shown here within the historic district. The truncation of the block by the BQE is evident. Um, and, uh, the lack of a contiguous central open space, uh, within the block is, uh, obviously, uh, is obvious. Um, the height diagram showing the two-story extension, uh, that we propose is consi- is consistent with other extensions within that block. Uh, our site plan and the location, uh, detail with the extension are shown with, uh, darker shading there. Uh, massing studies and lines of visibility shown on this slide, the current conditions are shown at the upper-left model. Uh, the presumed massing, uh, in eighteen eighty-five with the side porch is shown in the upper-right model. The proposed massing in yellow is shown, uh, in the lower-left model. Uh, and, uh, in the lower right-hand area, we show, uh, a reduced visibility of the rear extension, the, uh, yellow highlighted, uh, area due to its setback from the, uh, four-story section of the, uh, front portion of the building. A, uh, diagram of potential visibility from openings in the block are shown here only, uh, at point B along Hick Street would the extension be visible. Views from point A and point B are shown in these two photographs here. B obviously offers visibility of the horizontal extension. Uh, this is a view from point C. Visibility into the block is blocked by a two-story high concrete block wall presumably erected to block sound from, and sight of the BQE. Um, the line of the proposed extension is dotted in red for your reference in the right-hand, uh, photo there. Uh, views from point D, um, along Willow Street, uh, the visibility is blocked by buildings at the interior of the block. Uh, the existing floor plans show the proposed removal of the rear extension at the second floor. The, uh, top floor, uh, roof demo plan has nothing significant here. Uh, the proposed floor plan show the excavated area below the, uh, in, uh, new addition and the lengthened areaway at the side yard. That's on the left-hand side of the plan. Uh, the red shading denotes walls that are to be insulated with continuous exterior insulation and cavity insulation. And if I didn't make this clear before, our intention is to comply with the twenty-twenty NYC Energy Conservation Code, even though as an existing building, uh, that full compliance isn't required. Um, the, uh, second and third floor plans, uh, show the extent of the proposed addition with green metal stud frame walls and blue masonry walls. The fourth floor plan shows, uh, new window doors to the roof. The fourth floor plan shows new window doors to the roof terrace atop the addition. I note them as window doors. In fact, they function as outswinging doors, but they are glazed areas, but the glazed areas of these doors are configured to imitate other windows at the facades, which will be obviously get to the elevations. The existing front elevation is at the left and the proposed at the right. Please note that the entry door and inframent is restored to its nineteen forty appearance. The trim of the first, of the two first floor windows mimic the historic flat trim of the entry door and served to distinguish the base from the upper floors. The existing south elevation, the dotted line denotes the original roof profile of the house in the first half of the nineteenth century. The new clavard at the south elevation on the right side will duplicate the original exposure and will also show the ghosting of the original roof line with the clavered jointing that was represented, that was present in nineteen sixty. That that joint line may be a little bit more prominent on these drawings, of course, than it will be in real life, once it's all painted up, but nevertheless, it will be there. And serve as a reminder what was once going on there. The let's see, what else do I want to say about that? Who knows about it? The oh, excuse me, I just wanted to also mention that the first floor is shown with brick cladding and that will be recessed from the clavard by one inch. The brick does turn into the window opening, though the window will only be set back roughly an inch from the plane of the brick. The added entry door at the extended area way is shown at its western end. The window doors are shown at the fourth floor rear. The rightmost window is shifted northward by nine inches to fall within the line of the rear addition. This facade is not a part of a continuous row and the window placement is not related to adjoining houses. The detail sections through the proposed windows highlight the new crown profile at the head of the windows. The overall height remains the same, but as noted in the upper right detail, the projection is reduced and the bracket is eliminated. The proposed detail matches the profile of the trim at forty-eight Hick Street, which I showed you before, which is also a four-story house. Shown here is a fully detailed dimension elevation of the windows and their components. And lastly, the proposed front and side elevations are rendered here in their proposed colors. This drawing, as I noted before, incorrectly notes hardy plank as the siding. And again, just to emphasize, the front facade will be wood. The other elevations will have artisan lap siding. All the trim will be solid wood. All the siding and the trim will be field painted. My clients and I recognize that our proposal to modify the window trim may be controversial, but I would like to emphasize that the facades of wood frame houses such as this one and forty-eight Hicks, as compared to brick and brownstone houses, have a history of being modified. And this minor modification we propose can be appropriately considered as a natural step in its evolution. We certainly believe that the proposed window and framing is an improvement to the facade's original, original proportion while maintaining its Italian style. This flatter unbracketed crown improves its relationship with number forty, its sister building from eighteen ten. Thank you very much for your attention to my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or clarify any points.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. We do have at least one commissioner with questions. So Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Booth, I'm having a little trouble understanding. Could you repeat that again? Cutting out on me?
How's that?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, so is the clapboard on the front and the clapboard on the side supposed to match in dimension?
They have different exposures and that different exposure is obvious on the nineteen forty, nineteen sixty photos. And it's actually quite a common occurrence in the buildings in this area of the heights. So there's a wider exposure on the side facade compared to the front facade. But I very carefully counted all of those clavards to ensure what height they are and you know, that their office I would match that.
Great. Now, how does the brick and where it turns the corner to the front?
There's a wood trim that runs all the way down the front. You know, it's obviously changed over time, but there is a vertical molding is obviously evident at the upper floors. It runs down to the ground floor and the wood trim would cap the brick.
Okay, because that's not shown in your elevation. Minor.
Okay, that, that, that may be possible and I apologize for the oversight. Let me just, the, the brick, as I mentioned, is recessed by an inch and that allows for the trim to overlap the brick at that point. And just to get back to this, I'll just take a quick look at that.
Right.
Acknowledge that you're right. I'm sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Chen.
Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hathaway, you mentioned this front is out of plum by four inches.
Yes, I did.
Is anything being done to correct it?
Yes, the, I guess I didn't highlight this point. The insulation, the rigid insulation that we're wrapping the house with intends to be tapered at the front facade. The tapered insulation will ultimately like tapered to zero inches at the first floor and be approximately three and a half inches, say, some of the, at the top floor. And this will plumb out the facade as well as get us that continuous insulation that will allow us to comply with the twenty twenty energy code. And that will also, I have to mention, I'm sorry, I didn't make a point of this during my presentation. That will also require us to remove store and replace the cornice because the cornice will be brought out to the new facade plane too.
Thanks for clarifying that. That was my question in terms of the corners.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Lutte.
Hello, I guess we're all, we all have feedback. Can you tell me why?
Why am I proposing brick? Yes, well, yes, I am proposing brick veneer as opposed to solid brick. Because the brick should not project beyond the clavard siding presently with the application of that sort of rough textured stucco. The stucco projects a little beyond the the clavard, which besides creating water issues, just aesthetically is, you know, appears inappropriate. There are other buildings with brick bases, wood frame buildings with brick bases in this district. I felt that that was appropriately considered stucco also. And while I, by fact, it wasn't opposed to the stucco, I felt that the brick just added a more formal appearance to this house.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? And I apologize for the feedback that for some reason all of the commissioners and myself have. John, it's not happening when you speak.
Okay, I'm glad.
That's good, but we'll try to muddle through. Let's see if there's any public testimony. Anthony, will you go through the testimony? Anthony? Anthony, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Sarah, I'm guessing we're hearing echo.
Oh, that's a good idea. John, is your YouTube on?
Let me see. I didn't think so. I do not have YouTube on. No.
So, hi, Nicole here with Hathaway Attack. I think it's the feedback from your microphone. So when you're not speaking, maybe mute and you won't have the
All right, Anthony, will you go ahead?
I'm sorry, you asked me to see if anyone had testimony, correct?
Yes.
I couldn't hear you at first. So we do have Simeon who's raised his hand. So I won. Simeon, are you there?
Yeah, I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we hear you perfectly.
Excellent. Um, let's just see. Nope, sorry about that. All right, I seem to be non, my video is doing something weird. Okay. Simeon Bankhoff, Executive Director, the Historic District Council. HGC would like to thank the applicant, the architect reaching out to us during the design process for this proposal was very much appreciated. Upon review, HGC's committee felt that this was generally a sensitive, well-researched and thoughtful application, which raised some interesting questions about preservation philosophy. How far should one take a restoration? Should facade be returned to its original style and design? Or should a visible record of the building's history be left legible? In this instance, HGC recommends that the Italianate details of the facade be left intact to keep a sense of the building's long history and of the many hands which have touched it. This is especially true with regard to the primary facade, since to completely restore it to its original federal style would entail removing the fourth floor, which is not being proposed. We are not suggesting such an alteration be performed, but it's important to be aware that the top windows on this facade were never in the federal style and to federalize them would be to reference a historic narrative which never existed. Keeping to this line of reasoning, HGC suggests the Italianate details of the facade, the doorway pediment and the window and framens remain. We do not oppose the reconfiguration of the windows to two-over-two as that was a historic condition, even within the Italianate environment. In regard to the treatment of the side facade of the new rear yard addition, HGC finds the proposed changes to be sensitive and fitting with the general nature of the building and Brooklyn Heights. I especially liked the retention or perhaps even the illumination of the ghosting of the peaked roof. We do recommend that the material of the proposed replacement clavard be wood instead of the proposed hardy plank. I was unclear during the specifics of that, the presentation, if, whether that was still going to be the case or not. Thank you very much. And again, we feel in general, this is a thoughtful and sensitive presentation and proposal.
All right, thank you, Simeon. All right, and I do see a hand for Judy Stanton. So I will bring her in. Judy, are you there?
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you see me?
We cannot see you.
I don't know. Okay, well.
We can hear you perfectly, though.
All right, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't see. Oh, shoot. I don't see a video button, so I'll just speak as long as you can hear me. That's an important thing. We are pleased to support this well-thought-out renovation proposal. Our research shows that thirty-eight Hick Street and other clavard house, the other clavard house next door to forty Hick Street were both built in eighteen ten, making them the oldest surviving houses in Brooklyn Heights. As such, any application to alter this house would need to take special care in design and documentation to respect that history. We feel this project meets those aspirations. We have several suggestions for refinement. First, we think the topmost new window opening on the south elevation should be made slightly smaller and moved a bit off-center from the two new window openings below. A formal column of aligned, identically sized new window openings would not be a typical alteration. Instead, we think a somewhat more regular pattern would better match the historical renovations that have occurred on other Northites wood frame houses. This would also, in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, this would also allow the top window opening to better complement the original gable framing, which still exists, similar to the applicant's plan to restore the window opening at the left side of this facade. We also believe that this aspect of the proposal should be approved by, at the commissioner level because adding four new windows to this visible secondary facade, regardless of existing air conditioning openings, does not fall under either the letter or spirit of the staff level approval rule. Second, we feel that facing the south elevation and brick veneer is overly ambitious and carries some risks. Wrapping the corners of the window openings will be difficult to execute. The material might not be particularly durable and may very well be obscured by landscaping or storage anyway. We think a simple stucco application is a better choice for replacement material. Third, we express some caution on the attempt to bring the front facade forward. We sympathize with the desire for better engine and energy efficiency by increasing the available depth for insulation, but that should be pursued only if it can be accomplished without removing the cornice during the course of construction. We would also mention that our committee debated the merits of the proposal versus a more radical approach to attempt a federal style renovation, restoration rather. We concluded that this house's history of previous alterations would make an originalist approach impossible to achieve. We were happy to have read that fifty years ago when our historic district was in its infancy, the commission encouraged a prior owner to renovate rather than demolish these two clavard houses, which were literally falling down. We're glad they were saved then and we think this current proposal carries on that tradition of respectful rehabilitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. So I do not see anyone else with their hand raised. There is no one else with their hand raised.
Great. And I don't believe we had any other written testimony either. Okay, so John, would you like to respond to some of the comments in the testimony?
Yes, I'll start with the easy one. Regarding the Judy's comment about stucco application as compared to brick, I think we would find that an acceptable change. I, although I will say that they do have veneer brick that actually is formed in a corner, an L shape, so I, I'm not, I wouldn't have proposed it if I was concerned about its durability. To the biggest sticking point, which was mentioned by both BHA and HDC, the Italian detailing around the windows. Obviously, what we're doing here is maintaining an Italian detailing, but we are trying to essentially modify it. Yes, I I, I don't feel that a bad decision at one point in time necessarily has to be perpetuated forever. And I just really feel that if you look at the front facade and how much wall area there is compared to window area, it's vastly different from other Italian row houses with large windows. The federal style houses had much smaller windows. The houses, the windows were not increased when they converted this to an Italian design. And so I think that some modifications similar to what happened at number forty-eight Hicks, that corner building. is appropriate. That's clearly in an Italian design, too. And I think that the that, again, I'll just emphasize that the design we're proposing here isn't not Italian. It's just, I guess I'll say a less less bulky Italian. And, and I just asked if the commissioners considered that question of whether any modification of a wood framed facade is not original to the building is, it might be possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, not seeing any hands raised. I'm going to begin to unmute everyone so that we can close the hearing. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Luttrell, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we are moving into our discussion. And I think it is very interesting application here with an addition. And that references historic addition, although a little taller and new insulation to meet the energy code, which results in change in material and some detailed material choices that have been made here. So Commissioner Bland, would you like to start on this since this is your district?
I would indeed. And boy, you learn something every day. I've only lived in Brooklyn Heights for 48 years. I had no idea we had an 18 thin house. Or that this pair, which I know very well, were the, are the oldest two houses in the Heights. 1810, I mean, Thomas Jefferson had just stepped down as president. This is amazing to me. Anyway, I'll echo the two people who testified, both well known. And say that this is a wonderful presentation and I think generally certainly in the right direction. I, I think I can find it all appropriate. I think I am siding on the side of leaving the existing Italianate detailing around the windows as is, but I could go either way, I suppose, hearing the rest of my fellows as they make their opinions as well. But a very nice job and I'm just really delighted to know the history of these two buildings, which I didn't. By the way, that passageway that provides access to that brick house, that brick house until, I don't know, not so long ago was where Carol Bellamy, who if you remember, ran against Ed Koch unsuccessfully, where she lived. She was head of UNICEF for many years after that. I believe she doesn't live there anymore, but that, that was her house. Anyway, thank you for letting me drift a little bit to the side of the point.
Thank you. Commissioner Luttrell?
I agree with Fred. This is a wonderful project and I thank the applicants for all of the attention to detail and history connected with the project. I love that and I love that the entrance on the side is still going to be on the side. I'm fine with the windows and I'm not a fan of brick veneer, so I would really advocate for stucco instead. And that's it. I think it's a great project.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree. I think it's a great project. I think the facade is so powerful. It's just there, you know. I also think that the brick veneer should stucco. I think stucco would work better.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Ah, so you didn't skip me this time. Yeah, going straight to that window issue. You know, they're going to remove and reinstall the, the cornice, which is Italianate. And so it seems fair to hold them to the window detail in an Italianate's consistent style, although it would seem odd to hold them to the exact precise change that had been made in the past. So as long as the staff feels that what they do is consistent, I'm okay with it. I don't think anyone commented on the rear addition, which I think is modest. It aligns with the building next door and that is fine as well. And I do agree with the stucco in, in the place of the brick veneer, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes. I, I don't know if I agree with all of the decisions, but I think that all of the decisions were made with a very, with very kind of wide eyed and conscious understanding of the complexities of, of this kind of preservation. So I think the decisions were, were considered. And so I, I respect that. And I think, and I agree with Judy Stanton's point, that this is a, in so, because of that is a respectful rehabilitation. Because it's, it's really that. I mean, the, the replacement of the, and all of the wood siding is significant. And it will sort of never be what it was, but it's rehabilitation and it, and it's, and it's done in a very thoughtful manner. So I support all, everything as it's, as it's presented.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
This application really gave me a hard time. I really feel conflicted about it. Because as Addie pointed out, it's, I think even more than a rehabilitation, it's a reconstruction. The only thing that will be, remain of this original building will be the studs. They're taking out everything from the inside and the outside. So I have a problem reconciling that. But I think at a minimum, they should maintain the existing cornice and window surrounds. And I agree with Brooklyn Heights Association that they, that they should not plumb the front facade if it means having to take the cornice down. I worry about that not going back up properly. And I just found the whole thing, even though it's, it's very nice and it will be beautiful when it's done. I find it troubling because nothing is the original once, once they do this project.
Commissioner Chapin?
Well, I, I think that I can support it as presented. As far as the issue of the stucco. If the majority of commissioners feel that it should be stucco, I could also support that. But I can, I think I can support it as presented.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum?
I think I'm with Ann on this one. I, I am troubled by the extent of historic material being removed. I understand why. But I think we should work with them and the staff to minimize the amount. I think we should keep the maybe less felicitous but more historic window surrounds. Except on the first floor. I think the first floor has been modified extensively anyway. They can do what they want to do on the first floor. I think that the thin brick is a bad precedent and the stucco is the way to go. I think the rear yard addition is fine.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with my fellow commissioners that if the majority feels that it should be stucco. I have no problem with it. I'm a little bit torn between, you know, whether to make the front facade plumb again or not. Ann does have a good point, as so does Commissioner Goldblum. Again, I leave it to the majority to decide. Again, it's back to that energy conservation versus leaving it intact because there is some truth to leaving it as is and you can tell the building is leaning and that is the way. You know, it's more historic. And so I leave it to the majority.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I mean, I do, I, I do recognize the concerns about removing so much and but I think that the majority of commissioners are comfortable with the project as proposed. As long as the side wall at the lower level is a stucco instead of the brick veneer. And if the staff works with the staff on the window lintels. But I think the majority of you are comfortable with changing the lintels, just refining those details in consultation with the staff. So I, I think that's where we are. And Commissioner Luttrell, would you be able to read this motion and we'll see where we are?
Yeah. In the matter of LPC docet 2011169, 38 Hick Street. Brooklyn Heights Historic District, a frame house altered in the mid 19th century with an added fourth story and Italianate features. The application is to alter the facade, replace windows, excavate and construct a rear yard addition. I know that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I also note that there is a facade easement at this building held by the trust for architectural easements. Finally, I note that the central green space of this block was disrupted by the construction of the Brooklyn Queens Expressway and a new row of buildings along Willow Street with staggered rear facades. I recommend approval. Finding that this early 19th century building has had several significant alterations, including redesigns and enlargements throughout its history, including the addition of a fourth story, the installation of an Italianate style cornice and window lintels and alterations at the ground floor, that the proposed two over two double hung windows will reflect the window configuration present in the 1940s tax photograph will be keeping with the Italianate style of the cornice will be harmonious with the streetscape. That although the existing wood siding will be well, that's not true, right? Well, oh, no, 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 will be removed. It will facilitate, yes, insulating and air sealing the building envelope with a continuous thermal barrier to achieve an extremely energy efficient retrofit of the building. The historic step jointing at the fourth floor gable will be replicated and the historic wood cornice will be salvaged and reinstated, thereby recreating and retaining significant architectural features. That the presence of painted signage at the front facade will recall the painted signage historically found in this historic district. That the proposed alterations to the rear facade featuring punch single and combined openings with double hung windows at the existing and new floors will be in keeping with rear facades of surrounding buildings in this block. I recommend that
Commissioner Luttrell, that's a different set of findings. Could you please look for page 505 on the, on the handout for 38 Hicks? There are, there are many other findings.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. I see what happened. Yeah. That the exterior plane of the proposed cladding with new tempered insulation behind it will closely align with the brick facade at the adjoining house. And that the slide enlargement of the building envelope will be largely imperceptible. That the painted finish texture and dimensions of the fiber cement board will closely match historic wood siding in appearance, that the entrance will be consistent with residential. Are you okay? Alterations at buildings of this type and style in the early 20th century in terms of its basic design and lesser prominence within the overall hierarchy of the facade. That the view of the existing side alley is obscured by a metal gate. And there is already a difference in grade and a retaining wall at this building, therefore the excavation of only the back portion of the alley will not detract from the streetscape or adjoy, adjacent buildings, that the installation of that the installation of stucco at the first floor of the side facade will help to minimize the impacts of added insulation to the exterior plane of the facade will be partially obscured from view by the alley gate. That the demolition of the existing rear yard extension will not result in the loss of significant historic fabric. That the proposed rear addition will be visible only from limited vantage points in conjunction with the side facade through a gap in the street wall. That the rear addition will not rise to the full height of the building and will be inset from the side facade of the building with a covered porch facing the alley, which has historic element at this building. Thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original and historically altered massing. That the modest projection of the proposed addition into the rear yard will align with the existing rear facade of the adjacent building and will not diminish a cohesive central green space. That the proposed modified window openings at the rear facade will not be visible from any public thoroughfare and will not substantially alter the character of the secondary facade or disrupt a consistent row of rear facades. That the work will not diminish, diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend that the applicant work closely with staff on the design of the window lintels as shown in the 1940s tax photograph.
Or to, to work closely on the details to be in keeping with the Italianate style.
Yes.
And the sidewall be revised to be stucco.
Yeah, I actually had mentioned this stucco. I made a revision. So, yes.
Right. Okay, right. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
I will second it.
Okay, and Anthony, let's call the vote.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Goldblum?
Oh.
I, I couldn't hear.
No.
No, okay, sorry. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Right.
Okay, with two opposed and eight in favor, the motion passes.
That's approved with those modifications. Good luck with the project and continue to work with the staff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Well, that is the conclusion of our day. Thank you all for your time and dedication as always and all of your thoughtful comments. And this is it for August, so everybody enjoy the next few weeks and we'll see you in September. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you. And thank everybody for all of their work.
Yes.